2018, please stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, councilors and guests as well. Councilor Monahan did notify me mid-afternoon, indicated he did not think he'd be able to make it this evening because of work duties. I know Councilor Sullivan is going to be just a few minutes late, just a family obligation, but he said he would be present. So with that being said, Mr. Clerk?
We have the acceptance of a minutes of May 14, 2018, City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
An appointment of David Taxara, 31 North Manchester Street, Brockton, the Brockton License Commission for a three-year term.
Refer to Committee on Finance.
An appointment of Phyllis Ellis of 273 West Chestnut Street, Brockton, to the Brockton Library Board of Trustees to serve the unexpired term of Jane Bradley Terenacore.
Refer to Committee on Finance.
An appointment of Lisa O'Donnell, 30 Rock Metal Drive, Brockton, to the Brockton Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term.
Refer to Committee on Finance.
We have the hearings. We have the petition of Ralph Garcia, 294 Front Street, Apartment 16, One Sock at Rhode Island, for a license to soliciting canvas on behalf of Revised Energy, local address 5 South Summer Street, Haverhill, Mass.
Counselor Falwell?
Point of inquiry on the various hearings that are going to be held. Do we have a query report back on each of these?
What is that now?
Do we have a query report back, the criminal offender record information check that I presume they would sign voluntarily?
Under this solicitor and canvassing, if you're asking yet, they did go to the police department. The police department did come back stating that there was no problem with these things. Now, if you're asking for an actual report, I don't believe we have that on file.
Have, just to the, we're not at the hearing yet, to the President, have we traditionally just allowed a statement from the police saying everything's fine, or have we actually had something in the file?
I think in the past, we've always maintained the rule with the file.
In the past, it's been just as I explained to you now, that once we get the report from the police department, that their process has been taken care of, then it comes before the council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Time having arrived, time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. If there's anybody, first gentleman, excuse me, I should say, first gentleman needs to come down. Was the, is it Ralph?
Yes, sir.
Nocia?
Yeah.
Did we read the name? You read the name, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Garcia. For whatever reason, we don't have a podium up front. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Okay, I'm just going to open up the hearing. So I declare the hearing open at this time, and anyone wishes to speak in favor, which would be yourself, I'd ask you to state your name and address to the clerk.
My name is Ralph Garcia. I live 801 Matthew Court, Rain Tree, Mass.
Very good. Anything you'd like to say while you're in front of us here this evening? Any comment?
Yeah, what I do when I canvass, it's a program that a lot of people take advantage of, since they are entitled to, just paying for it in their National Grid or EverSource bill. This is a program that will help a lot of people in the community save money tremendously in their energy bill. Great program to take advantage of.
Okay, very good. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you. Two questions. Is this a MassSave program?
Yes, sir.
And so you'll go out and solicit and canvass to set up energy audits?
Yes, sir.
And can you give me your address again?
801 Matthew Court.
Okay, that's not the address that's on our paperwork. Have you recently moved?
I moved four months ago, five months ago.
Yeah, correct, because on our report, we have a-
The question would be, what address did you put on your application? Was it 90, 294 Front Street?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And that's why it's listed that way in this agenda?
Yes.
Okay. And how long you been doing, have you been doing this in other towns?
About five or six months, approximately.
Okay. And Revised Energy is a subcontractor of MassSave?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else that wishes to speak in favor, please come forth and state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition that wishes to say anything, please come forward. I declare the hearing closed.
Counselor Falwell.
Counselor Falwell?
I was just going to ask a general question. Is there a uniform worn? Is there something?
Yes, sir. I canvassed, yeah. I canvassed a little earlier today because I had an appointment, so I'm not wearing my shirt in my bag.
And does the company have an ID card, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cruz?
I do have a question, actually, for our city clerk. I believe, once they're approved by us, they get a, they have to have an ID that says they've been approved by-
They go back and they have to meet the requirements of the police department. If they have an ID, they also should have the identification on vehicles. They have to let the department know if they're going to be in any area after 6:00 today. There are all of these rules that they should be familiar with because they've been told about them, and they're also in writing on their application.
Thank you. I mostly wanted the people at home to understand that there's rules that go with this, and that they have to have those IDs on. In fact, this weekend, I had somebody knock on my door selling, trying to sell roofs because he was working in the street, and I told him he could not. He said he had a state license. I said, "We don't, that doesn't matter, you have to get a City of Brockton Solicitor's license." So I assume these gentlemen are familiar with those rules, so, thank you.
The rules also indicate that this is not a forceful type of solicitation.
Correct.
Once you, you know, if people are not interested in your product, then that's it. You don't stand there and beat them on the door, or try to beat them into submission. So they understand that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a move to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, all in favor. Opposed, so approved.
We have James Allen of 21 Madison Street, Medford, Mass., for license to solicit and canvass on behalf of Revised Energy, local address 5 South Summer Street, Haverhill, Mass.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. The gentleman, please come forward and state his name and address to the clerk.
James Allen, 21 Madison Street, Unit 2, Medford, Massachusetts.
Anything you'd like to say as well?
No, thank you.
Okay, that makes it, Counselor Cruz?
How long have you been doing this?
I've been with the Revised Energy Company since November, and I've been canvassing since about a year and a half ago.
Actually, what towns have you been canvassing in for the last year and a half or so?
Sure. Newton, Massachusetts, Wallfam for the last few months, Medford, a lot off the top, I can't get a lot of them, sorry.
That's fine, just wanted to know where you've been.
For sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else here that wants to speak in favor, please come forward and state their name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition? I declare that part of the hearing closed. Councilors, need a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to recommend favorably, all in favor. Opposed, recommended favorably. Thank you. Good luck.
Petition of Bruce Ames of 425 Diamond Hill Drive, 2nd One Sock at Rhode Island, for license to solicit and canvass on behalf of Revised Energy, local address 5 South Summer Street, Haverhill, Mass.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. State your name and address to the clerk.
My name is Bruce Richard Ames III. I live on 425 Diamond Hill Road in One Sock at Rhode Island.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
I have nothing.
Seeing none, any, Counselor Azak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have any literature that you leave with?
We do. We have trifolds, we have cards with our business name and number on them for each of our individuals. We have a bunch of information that follows up with it, either from little things to bigger bookmarks, to trifolds, to actual pieces of paper that let them know what they're getting into.
Very good. And the other question is, is do you canvass every home, or do you have a list that you go by?
We have a map that we're given daily, and we have to cover our area of the map, so we just work street by street and cover all the area.
House by house. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Everyone else who wants to be heard in favor, please come forward. State, Counselor Cruz?
How long have you been doing this?
I've been in the canvassing for over five years. I just started with them maybe five months ago, but I've been doing it with another company for longer.
Who were you with before?
I was with Moonworks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor. Anyone else here who wants to be heard in favor? That part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition, please come forward and state their name, address to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that hearing closed.
Motion favorably.
Motion's been made and seconded to recommend favorably, all in favor. Opposed, goes back to the full City Council, favorable recommendation. Thank you and good luck.
Petition of Dan Hull of 66 Patton Road, One Sock at Rhode Island, for license to solicit and canvass on behalf of Revised Energy, local address 5 South Summers Street, Haverhill, Mass.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. State your name and address to the clerk, if you would, please.
How's it going? This is Daniel Hull, 66 Patton Road, One Sock at Rhode Island.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to say?
Well, what you guys said before was, you know, it is something that we're not going to push on you. This is a program that you already pay for in your bill, so it's no cost to take advantage of it. You know, and when a customer says, you know, they're not interested, we're not pushy, we're not trying to sell you anything. It is something you're paying for on the bill, so.
Very good. Anyone else here who wants to be heard in favor of Counselor Cruz?
Just how long have you been doing it now?
For about four years now. I used to work with Moonworks at Bruce, with Bruce, and I've been with Revised for about a year now, a little under a year.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Azak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you give us a timeline when you will be starting, so residents at home can have an idea that are watching, know that it's your company that's going to their doors?
Yeah. Usually, I live in One Sock, so I, Rhode Island, I usually leave around 9:30. We get out there for around 10, 10:30. Usually from 10:30 to probably 4, 4 the latest. All depends. Usually it takes about two to three hours to get our quota, so.
And do you have a set time within the next, I mean, few months? Is it the next year? What time are you giving Brockton that you will be canvassing?
Like, for the amount of time? It all depends on when we finish our maps.
Okay.
But it could take a couple months, maybe. I'm not too sure.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else that wants to be heard in favor, please come forward. Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody in opposition? Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed.
Motion favorably.
Motion's been made and seconded to recommend favorably, all in favor. Opposed, recommended favorably to the full City Council. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, and, you know, good luck and enjoy and be safe.
Point of information for the council, as these gentlemen know, that although they work for one company, these licenses are based on individuals, so that if they're sick or they no longer work there, these licenses cannot be transferred to another individual. Okay, so, I just make that point clear.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
We have the report of the Real Estate Committee for its meeting of May 15, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Court Ordinance Committee for its meeting of May 21, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of May 21, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor submitting a letter of resignation from John DeAndre from the position of City Real Estate Custodian.
Just a correction on that particular item, if I might. The last name was spelled incorrectly. It should be A-N-D-R-A-D-E, not what is there. And it's also from the Brockton License Commission, not the City Real Estate Custodian.
Right. And that is a scripter's error.
That's a scripter's error, yes.
From the Assistant City Auditor certifying the balance in the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation of May 18, 2018, $455,919.28.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of the Fire Department requesting transfer from the ambulance receipt account in the amount of $19,000 for the department equipment. $10,000 will be used to hire a restoration company to clean contaminants from fire alarm due to a manhole fire on Pleasant Street. $9,000 to hire a third party to perform quality improvements in auditing emergency medical dispatch system. Mass CMR requires that 7% to 10% of emergency medical call be audited. Balance is of May 16, 2018, $403,835.95. These funds are restricted for usage for communication and emergency response expenses incurred by the Brockton Fire Department under the ambulance contract.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the City Auditor certifying the balance in the account of Comcast Cable Revolving Fund as of May 17, 2018, is $1,122,047.64.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the City Auditor certifying as of May 8, 2018, the balance and account for vacant and abandoned building revolving fund is $863,737.52.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Superintendent of Buildings requesting that the City Council reauthorize the revolving funds for the fiscal 2019 vacant and abandoned building account.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the City Auditor certifying as of May 8, 2018, the balance and account of demolition revolving fund is $166,175.63.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Superintendent of Buildings requesting that the City Council reauthorize the revolving funds for the fiscal 2019 revolving demolition account.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the City Auditor certifying as of May 8, 2018, the balance in the account for parking meter fees reserved is $652,150.40. Parking Authority Reserve, $582,763.8.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Executive Director of the Brockton Parking Authority requesting a renewal Parking Authority Revolving Fund for fiscal 2019, the revolving fund for revenues from parking violation fines up to and including the amount of $250,000 in order to pay expenses of Authority's parking enforcement program for fiscal year 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, requesting that the City Council substitute this communication for the total transfer of $32,789 to snow removal costs of the Parking Authority, so that proper action can be taken. The order was heard and referred to Finance on May 14, 2018, and City Council meeting and heard in Finance, May 21, 2018.
Accepted and pla, oh, sorry.
The wording appropriation was an error in form, and the request is in fact a transfer in the amount of $32,789 from the Parking Authority. Personal services other than overtime, full-time, $14,600. Parking Authority personal services other than overtime, part-time, $8,100. Parking Authority ordinary maintenance, buildings and grounds, $10,089. To snow removal, $32,789.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an order that the City Council hereby declares the city-owned parcel assesses parcel ID 021-059 as surplus and available for disposition. And further, that the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the transfer of the surplus property and to take other actions as necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of the same. In council, February 26, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Real Estate. That report was favorable.
The questions on adoption by roll call vote, Mr. Sullivan.
Just, first of all, I want to apologize for being petty. I had a baseball game I was coaching. But on 34, unlike 35, it actually does not state the actual address. Do we know where that property's located?
On 34?
On 34, it just says the parcel ID.
I believe it's the same address, if I'm not mistaken.
So it's on West Chestnut Street?
It's on West Chestnut Street. Both are West Chestnut Street.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Macastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tenneby affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the City Council hereby declare the city-owned parcel at or near 59 West Chestnut Street, assesses parcel ID 021-007 as surplus and available for disposition. And further, that the City Council authorizes the mayor to execute the transfer of the surplus property and to take other action as necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of the same. In council, February 26, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Real Estate. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Macastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tenneby affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the City Council hereby declare the city-owned parcel assesses parcel ID 021-034 as surplus and available for disposition. And further, that the City Council authorizes the mayor to execute the transfer of the surplus property and to take other action as necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of the same. In council, February 26, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Real Estate. That report was favorable.
The questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Macastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tenneby affirmative?
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of the total grant award in the amount of $381,350.64 from the Commonwealth of Mass, Department of Transportation, the City of Brockton Planning Department, Mass Dart Main Street Grant Fund. The grant will fund for work towards restoring two-way traffic to downtown Brockton. These downtown improvements support the city's recent downtown redevelopments and proposed new developments. In council, May 14, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, Counselor Falwell?
I am going to vote for this, however, if we find, as a result of doing this work, that we're looking at another $6, $7, $8 million to go to two-way traffic downtown, this council has really got to study that very carefully. That's a sizable amount of money, and I would certainly want to know from people throughout the community, and especially in the downtown area, that they favor that type of an expenditure. So thank you for letting me clarify my position.
No problem, Counselor. Thank you. Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Macastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tenneby affirmative?
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of the total grant award in the amount of $25,231.32 from the Commonwealth of Mass Attorney General's Office, Detective's Division, 2016 Community Policing Services, Anti-Heroin Task Force Grant Award, to the City of Brockton Police Department, 2016 Community Policing Services, Anti-Heroin Task Force Program Grant Award Fund. In council, May 14, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Macastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tenneby affirmative?
The order is adopted.
We have a transfer of $200,000 from the Treasurer's Debt Interest Short Term Notes to the Treasurer's Medicare Tax in order to cover the expected shortfall due to contract settlements and overtime through the remainder of the fiscal year. In council, May 14, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Macastro?[1482.91] Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tend to the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
We have a transfer of $32,789 from personal services other than overtime, full-time, $14,600. Personal services other than overtime, part-time, $8,100. Ordinary maintenance, building and grounds, $10,089. To snow removal, $32,789. This is favorable with stipulations. In council, May 14, 2018, refer to standing committee on finance. That report was favorable, as I said, with stipulations that the mayor submit a new order with correct wording, that it is being transferred, not appropriated. New order with corrections was submitted to clerk's office, May 22, 2018.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowergard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Here.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tend to the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
I resolve to invite several members of the local clergy, including Dr. Mark T. Oliver and Pastor Richard Reed, to come before the committee of this council to discuss their concerns with the sale of recreational cannabis in the city of Brockton. In council, May 14, 2018, ready to refer to standing committee on finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowergard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Here.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tend to the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
I resolve that Mary Aricardi, Senior Associate of the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management at the University of Mass, Boston McCarman Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies, be invited to a day before committee of this council to present the findings of a human resources review. In council, May 14, 2018, ready to refer to standing committee on finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowergard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Here.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tend to the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order in compliance with the provisions of the election laws, notices hereby given that the state primary will be held on Tuesday, September 4, 2018, in designated polling places.
Refer to finance.
Order pursuant to the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E, the city council authorizes reauthorization of Comcast revolving fund for the fiscal year 2019 from the cash receipts from Comcast franchise fees in excess of $675,000 pursuant to the cable license contract. And further that the expenditures for this fund shall not exceed $750,000 without further appropriation during fiscal year 2019.
Refer to finance.
Order pursuant to the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half, city council authorizes the reauthorization of the demolition revolving fund for fiscal 2019 for the sole purposes of helping to fund the costs in connection with the demolition of buildings in the city of Brockton, provided that not more than $110,000 may be so expended from the demolition revolving fund during fiscal 2019.
Refer to finance.
Order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half, city council authorizes the reauthorization of Parking Authority revolving fund for fiscal 2019 to receive revenues from parking violation fines up to and including the amount of $250,000. Set funds to be expended by the Parking Authority to pay expenses of parking regulation enforcement, repair, maintenance of laws, facilities, equipment, and capital project. But expenditures for capital project shall require the written approval of both the Parking Authority Board of Directors and the mayor for fiscal 2019. Amounts in excess of $250,000 shall be credited to the general fund.
Refer to finance.
Transfer in the amount of $19,000 from the ambulance receipt account in the amount of $19,000 to department equipment, $10,000 will be used to provide funding for decontamination and cleaning the fire alarm due to a manhole fire on Pleasant Street, $9,000 to perform quality improvements, and for auditing services for emergency medical dispatch system in compliance with the mass regulations.
Mr. President.
Counselor Cruz.
Due to the lateness of the fiscal year and the need to get some of this work done, would you like to make a motion to take this under suspended rule back down tonight?
Motion's been made and seconded that we take this under suspension of the rules enacted on this this evening. All in favor of that? Opposed? We would do that. I know the chief is here. If he wishes to make a comment in regards to it.
Good evening, councilors. So these two expenditures, like Counselor Cruz had mentioned, we're trying to get these done before the end of June. That's the reason I'm here tonight. The first one is in regards to the underground manhole fire that we had back in February. I will let you know that the law department is pursuing this through their insurance company. It was the company redoing Standard Modern Print Building. They were installing a Plexi-- I'm sorry, a plastic fence, drilling down one of the fence holes. They hit an electrical line. We were told that it was hit probably a week to 10 days before the fire broke out in the street. So it was nicked. The line was probably arcing, like I said, for probably a week to 10 days. When the fire did occur out on Pleasant Street, there are several conduits that make their way into the fire alarm office. So the smoke and sediment made its way through those conduits and affecting mainly the first floor of my fire alarm building, but it also did affect the second floor. So we've been trying to get that cleaned up. And like I said, because the insurance money hasn't come through yet, we're hoping to get this done with this ambulance money. And if and when hopefully we get that money from the insurance company, it will go back into the general fund. That's that $10,000. The $9,000 is for a regulation that we're under now that we have to audit between 10 and 10-- I'm sorry, 7% and 10% of our medical calls have to be audited now. At the time, it's being done by Deputy Chief Gallion himself, but we're finding that it's very time-consuming, so we're hoping basically to stub that out. So that's what these two expenditures are for.
Motion to recommend favorably.
Motion's been made and seconded to recommend favorably. All in favor? Opposed? So approved.
Thank you, councilors.
Motion for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail.
Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration, hopes--
Roll call vote.
Right, okay. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowergard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Here.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tend to the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail.
All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Resolve that the mayor, police chief, and its police union representatives appear before the finance committee to discuss providing on press and tourniquet and holder to every police officer within the city.
Refer to the committee on finance.
All these items on the agenda are available in their entirety for review in the city clerk's offices for all interested parties.
I need a motion to accept two late files.
Slow move over.
Motion made and seconded to accept two late files. One? Four, I'm sorry, four late files.
Slow move again.
We moved it four times already. Yeah. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Clerk.
The first late file, communication for the mayor in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, proposing an audit limiting the city personnel department statute in accordance with the recommendations provided in the Collins Center report. An audit limiting Article 5, Departments, Division 7, Departments of Personnel, be ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. The title of the audit, Department of Personnel, shall be replaced with Department of Human Resources. We have the appointment of Martinez Brophy to the position of Treasury Tax Collector for the city of Brockton for a term of three years. We have the appointment of John O'Donnell as the Chairman of the Board of Assessors for a term of three years.
On all of them, the first one's going to go to ordinance department, the ordinance department, ordinance committee. And then the other two will go to our next finance meeting in August, because we still have a-- we will have August and June, we'll have a regular finance meeting, so those two appointments will go there. So there's only three of them, right?
Actually, three.
Actually, three, okay. So that's all we have for late files. Anyone else have anything else for late files or anything?
I'll put those other items to you.
That's because they weren't advertised correctly, so that'll be held in June, okay? Those items there.
What's the question, Don? Would you-- any clarification?
The two items that I spoke to you about that didn't make the agenda, yeah.
Yeah, that there wasn't enough time to advertise them.
Right.
So they could be heard at this meeting.
They'll be heard at our June council meeting. Counselor Nacastro, I know you wanted to have a moment of personal privilege. You're welcome.
Mr. President, good evening. In a few weeks, the Old Colony Elder Services is teaming up with the Brockton Council on Aging to raise awareness about elder abuse. On Thursday, June 14, a march against elder abuse will take place in downtown Brockton. At 12 noon, rain or shine, participants will march up Main Street heading north from the Council on Aging Building at the corner of Main Street and Father Kenny Way to the Old Colony Elder Services offices at 145 Main Street, then march back to the Council on Aging for speeches, awards, and refreshments. City activist Lynn Smith, who also serves as Development Manager at Old Colony Elder Services, tells me that during fiscal year 2017, 30,000 cases of elder abuse were reported in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And wrap your arms around this, 60% of reported cases of elder abuse involved a family member as the perpetrator. And studies show one in 10 Americans who are ages 60 and older have experienced some form of abuse. This is unacceptable, and these issues are very close to my heart, as many of you know. I planned to invite Lynn Smith here to the council to speak about this upcoming elder march, but our budget hearing schedule next week has precluded it. All Brockton residents are invited to join this March Against Elder Abuse on Wednesday, June 14, beginning at 12 noon at the Council on Aging. The more participants who march, the more a spotlight will shine on the very important issue of abuse of elders. I'm grateful to Old Colony Elder Services and the Brockton Council on Aging for holding this event. So let me recap. On Wednesday, June 14, rain or shine, beginning at high noon at the Council on Aging, please join the March Against Elder Abuse. Thank you. And I have one other thing, Mr. President.
Go right ahead, counsel.
Okay. Mark your calendars and plan to attend the second Ward 4 meeting of 2018. It will be held from 6:30 until 8:00 on Wednesday, June 13, in the cafeteria at the Gilmore Elementary School on Clinton Street. I'm still working on my meetings presentations, but I'm hoping for a big turnout to talk about what's going on in Ward 4 and also in the city of Brockton. You don't have to live in Ward 4 to attend. All Brockton residents are welcome at the second Ward 4 meeting of the year on Wednesday, June 13, from 6:30 until 8 o'clock in the cafeteria at the Gilmore Elementary School. Call me with questions or comments at 508-941-0108. Please join us. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counsel. Just go right ahead, Counselor Rodriguez.
Counselor Nacastro, you said it was June 14.
I said--
The march--
The 14th, and my meeting--
It's not Wednesday.
What?
The 14th is Thursday.
My-- the march is Thursday, June 14. I apologize. Thursday, June 14. And the Ward 4 meeting is Wednesday, June 13. So I'm going to have a busy couple of days.
Okay, councilors.
The march is at high noon, excuse me. And my ward meeting is from 6:30 until 8:00.
Okay, councilors, just before we proceed, because next week we will start with the budget hearings, which will be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, June 4, 5, and 6, 6:30 p.m. The first night, we'll spend a little bit just hearing from the mayor and Mr. Condon. They'll start off at 6:30, and then we'll go right into the hearings. And Tuesday, 6:30, Wednesday, we will have a public hearing from 6 o'clock till 6:30, whatever it takes for anybody that wishes to address us at the public hearings in regards to the next fiscal year's budget. So that'll be Wednesday night, and then we'll go into the hearing. So again, all meetings will be held at the Wall Memorial Building. Just keep in mind with your calendar for whatever and however we end up with the hearings, probably do like we did last year, is probably have our finance meeting as we would have and I guess probably at that point, take any proposals for anything that has to be, you know, decreased from the budget, whatever, any budget cuts at that time, and then make sure we move it on in time for our final council meeting at the end of June, so that we'll have it in time for fiscal year July 1. If anything changes that date, I'll let you know. But any case, that's what we'll be starting next week. You should have already received an agenda for that. Should have been through email. If not, I have hard copy here. I'm not to say something could change. And if it does, I'll make sure you get a copy, you know, before the next meeting. So again, next week, we start at the Wall Memorial Building, and we'll take it from that point. Counselor, Mr. Clerk.
You may want to let them know that you've advertised this budget three times.
Okay.
Plus the website, plus it's on the bulletin board.
Okay.
Asking anyone that has any information speaking at that.
So everything, the clerk has told me everything has been advertised.